We have a Boy Scout troop with us tonight. I'm going to ask them to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. We've got the agenda I think we'll get through in time. First thing is approval of the minutes. Everybody look through the minutes and everything okay? Then as approved. Report of Town Manager, Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mayor Stanley, members of council. Just a few items of information of interest hopefully to council and the community. First, I want to note that the town of Bedford has active franchise agreements now with three different entities for provision of broadband internet service. Those companies are Shentel, Zytel, and Comcast. And as Zytel and Comcast extend their services, citizens and businesses are encouraged to check out the offerings of all in consideration of their individual needs. That's a bit of a change for us. Typically, in years past, when we've put out for Bedford franchises, we've only had one entity interested, so we now very soon will have three different choices of three very excellent and reputable companies. Also, I want to note that in addition to expansions at Walmart and Bedford Memorial Hospital, the building official reports that there are currently eighteen random individual lots that are under construction around town. So, might be quite a bit of dirt moving and construction vehicles as you are out and about. And also, I want to report that we are continuing to work through the process for replacing the McGee Street Bridge. As you know, that was closed back in 2019. We are taking advantage of the State of Good Repair Grant Program offered through VDOT. The good news is it won't cost us anything. The less good news is we have no control over the timeframe and it's obviously not quick. At this point, we are waiting on Norfolk Southern to complete their portion of the plan review process, but I will keep you apprised as we move along. And that concludes my report, but I'll be happy to respond to any questions.
If we don't have a timeline for Norfolk Southern.
I hope to live to see it.
And answer anticipated. All right, appearances before council, we have several people. First, Mr. Walker. Come up, state your name and where you live and talk to us.
Good evening. My name is Caleb Walker. I service pastor of missions and discipleship at Franklin Heights Church in Rocky Mount, Virginia. I'm the commuter on staff. I live at 121 Peakland Court. And Derek Daryl's my neighbor, and I want to thank him for his kind invitation to come lead us in prayer. And also want to thank, want to thank, I wrote her down, her name down right here. I want to thank Janet Robbie for her excellent communications in preparation for this meeting. If you'd care to join me in prayer.
Thank you.
Holy Father, majestic and holy, your word says in Hebrews 4:16, "Let us then with confidence come boldly before the throne of grace, that we may receive mercy and find grace to help in time of need." We thank you, especially in light of this Easter season, that in the death, burial, and resurrection of your son, that your throne is just that, the throne of grace. Thank you, Lord. We thank you for your ordination of government and the servant leadership of our elected officials. Please bless this meeting and may all be accomplished according to your will, for your glory and for human flourishing. Please bless the work and well-being of our councilmen and their families. We live before your throne of grace, Mayor C.G. Stanley, Vice Mayor Daryl Updike, Stacy Haley, Todd Foreman, Jay Abolito, Dave Foster, and Dwight Evans. Grant them wisdom like that of King Solomon for the tough decisions. Grant them the strength of Gideon, who with God on his side accomplished more than with three hundred men than with thirty-two thousand. Grant them the courage of Daniel on the lion's den in the face of fear. Grant them the protection of your heavenly host from the world, the flesh, and the evil one. Grant them the zeal of the prophet Nathan to call out the wrong and insight to commend the right. Grant them patience in the unclear decisions, perseverance in the clear decisions, and perspective to determine between the two. Grant them the peace in their hearts and minds according to Philippians 4, that passes all understanding. We thank you and give you the praise, honor, and glory in advance, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Next is Patricia Hunziger. Come on up. Name, address, and tell us what's on your mind, Patricia.
My name is Patricia Hunziger. I live at 1724 Woodville Drive. And instead of listening to rumors, I decided I would come and find it for myself. My question is, I know that the, excuse me, the electric rates have to increase. Everything else has increased. My question is, which, I am a former employee. I worked here for thirty-eight years, retired. The town and city of Bedford's been very good to me. I was very blessed to be employed here. But the question, the things that's concerning me is I'm hearing about the electric, which probably ten or fifteen years ago, it should have gradually went up. The town or city absorbed that. Now, we're going at rates that's increasing to people all at one time. And then my question is, how are we, how are you determining how much to project for that increase? I was told that the funds that are there now, there's no revenue operating account and there's no electric operating account. Everything is going into general fund. My question, is that fact or is that rumor?
Do you like me to speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so we have one full checking account, but on our general ledger, it's allocated across each fund. So, each time that something is spent in the electric fund, it's allocating it to the old cash account in the electric fund.
Okay, okay. I've kind of figured that because you have a budget line out.
Correct.
And you have, each department is separated.
Yes.
I know that years ago, those accounts were set up by Town Manager, Assistant Manager, and the Treasurer in New York to do those accounts separately because the electric department usually runs pretty good on its own. It's supposed to hold its own. So, how are you figuring if it's all going into a general fund, of what funds are actually coming in to support the electric department? How, how is that allocated?
Yes, so what the system does is it has a pooled cash account, and that's fund zero-zero on our books. And when I came here, the pooled cash account fund wasn't working, so the system wasn't set up correctly. And so, what we've done is we fixed it, where each time a transaction is posted, it allocates it to the checking account, and then it gives credit to the electric fund. So, it's a two-sided entry.
So, you're still working with Muse program or is it a new program? It's just been updated to do that because they wasn't able to do that before?
No, we fixed it.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much for answering my questions and I'm not happy about the increase, but I don't think any of us are.
I think as long as you work there, Patricia, and I remember that, and you did a great job.
Thank you.
You probably know, know quite a bit more than an average person.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kirby, step right up. Name, address, and tell us what's on your mind.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Allow me to have an opportunity to speak. Most of y'all already know me, Dan Kirby, 926 Watson Place. I just want to make a disclaimer before I get started. If my voice gets a little loud, I'm not getting outraged, I'm just getting a little passionate about what I want to speak to y'all today.
We understand.
Couple of weeks ago, me and Susan, my wife, was trucking through Liberty Lake Park. And lo and behold, I was floored. There was two porta potties sat in front and center, right in front of the tennis courts. In my twenty-eight years working with the city of Bedford, I've never, ever seen porta potties right up there, right, right in front. You can't miss it. Now, what kind of image are we setting for visitors and people coming into our parks? Of course, I'm saying that, it's two more than that. So, it's a total of four porta potties up in that area. Not a good image. I found out later the true reason why, and that kind of upset me a little bit too. Security, risk, and concerns because the police department have been allowed to set up shop and use it temporarily. I say temporarily because I know it's in the making in the works for a new PD to be built, which I can understand. For twenty-eight years I was here, I know what it looks like there. I know it's cramped quarters. I know they don't have room to do what they need to do. But I truly believe that some different alternative decisions could have been made instead of spontaneously allowing them to set up shop within a park, a park. Well, the restrooms have been closed off. Signs have been put up to tell patrons to use other restrooms in the park. Water fountain's been pulled off the side of the wall. So, it's more or less a, y'all have created a burden and inconvenience for every mother, parent, child, toddler, because they can't go to the restroom. They've got to go all the way down to the concession stand, all the way to the end of the park to get water or use the restroom. Most mothers aren't going to take their little small kids in the porta potty. That, that's my biggest concern. And also, while I am here, though, I'm sure each and every one of you, if not, I urge you to take a tour of every park facility that we've got here in town. Detonation has taken effect since the reversion, which in some ways, I know it was pros and cons for the reversion, but afterwards, there's been a lot of deterioration in all of that parks. I urge each and every one of you, take a look, walk through, and I, I noticed things myself, safety hazards, concerns that need to be fixed. I think priorities need to be set, and I think they ought to be met, especially for the benefit of our citizens and taxpayers. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. All right, council comments. Jay?
I want to thank everyone for coming out here tonight. I want to congratulate the water authority for celebrating Earth Day today. I don't know if y'all see it on the news or not, they upgraded their systems to help our warways, stuff and everything, and to save over two-hundred thousand on electricity. So, we appreciate that with them. I also wanted to thank the Bedford County Solid Waste and the Advent Building, they was coming through town today, picking up trash and cleaning up the town for us. So, I wanted to recognize them and thank them for what they did for us today.
Thank you, everybody, for coming, and I'm not going to repeat what Jay said, but I appreciate everything they've paid in also.
I just wanted to say thank you, everybody, for coming. Welcome to Boy Scouts tonight. Thank y'all for being here. Town is going into spring, first going, be May, it'll be summer before you know it. Like I said, there's things that, hopefully, you'll see things changing and stuff moving in town. So, like I said, and also, I want to say Dwight Evans is his birthday today, so everybody give Dwight a pleasant little pause. Councilman Evans, excuse me.
Yeah. Dwight, what are you, you're thirty, right, Dwight?
Thirty.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Also appreciate the Boy Scouts here. What troop are y'all with?
Oh, one eighty-three.
One eighty-three. Was you in troop one eighty-three?
I was in one seventy-one.
Actually, I spent time in both. I was.
You were just a hopper, weren't you?
Well, I was a problem child. But it was a great experience there and glad, glad, glad y'all are here and thank you for helping out with the Pledge of Allegiance. Good job. Birthday boy?
Well, thank everybody for being here and also thank y'all for y'all's concerns, you know, for voicing y'all's opinion. It's very important to, you know, how y'all feel, and that way, we know how to, you know, address certain issues. And also, thank y'all for the applause. I've got more years behind me than I had here to me. Trust me.
Well, that's uplifting.
I won't reiterate. I just thanks, thank y'all for taking the time to come out tonight and to be here and like Dwight said, just give us your opinion. It matters, so thank you.
And I won't say much other than, what, fifteen, twenty minutes? Thank everyone for coming. We have been having some good crowds here. Appreciate y'all coming and, and, you know, like Dave said, what questions you have, we want to hear them. We, we want to know what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong. And if we're not, we know we're not going to make decisions that pleases everyone. We get that. But at least you give us some ideas when I can go a little different direction. Again, thank everyone for coming. I want to especially recognize the Boy Scouts, and I'm glad to see you all come here. I was a scout myself. I came through the scouts. Do you still go to Camp Monakin and, I mean, not Camp Monakin, now Palatine, and that was my time? Put a tarin back up in there?
Right now, we go to Camp Barnhart, but yeah, we're thinking about going back to Palatine.
Okay, those are still there?
Palatine is, the tarin is not.
Is not? Well, they call that the heart, heart attack camp anyway, so that's why we went to Palatine. Well, good, that's why I went, I became, I went through the ranks at Boy Scout, became an Eagle Scout, like we were talking about earlier. And I will say, it's one of the best organizations for young people to go through. You learn a lot. You learn your scout skills. You learn teamwork. And things I used to this day, when I'm out camping, RVing and all that, I tie a knot, I say, yep, I know what knot that is. Learned in the Boy Scouts. I mean, things you learn, you will carry on. Leadership, so many things that you're learning now, you take for granted, but they will come back to help you. And I know, I see the live scout there, you're well on your way to being an Eagle. I, I know it used to be like roughly two percent of all the boys in scouting never become Eagle Scouts, so I don't know if it's still that or if it's still two percent. So, you, you will be one of those two percent. So, invite me to your recognition.
All right.
Do that. I'd love to come. But your ceremony and whatever they do for you. But I do it in my other Boy Scouts, have a lot of good memories of hikes on Appalachian Trail and cold nights and critters. Don't, don't ever camp in the shelters. Take your tin and fit your tin. But a lot of good times there and thank you for coming. If it's any more information you all will need, any paperwork, anything, see Mr. Warner, he'll get it to you. Or holler at me, I'll get it to you. Appreciate it. All right. Let's see, Report of Council Committees. We did not have any revisions to agenda. There are none, no public hearings. Consent agenda, Mr. Warner.
Shannon Walker has been filling in as the Town Representative on the Central Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program Policy Board until a new Chief of Police was in place. Term on this board expires on August 31st, 2025. Chief Jim Moore is prepared to step into this position, which will be a three-year term if appointed by council. Tonight, as part of the consent agenda, council was requested to appoint Chief Jim Moore to the Central Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program Policy Board for a three-year term, said term to expire August 31st, 2028.
All right. Been a consent agenda, do we need a motion or?
Go ahead and list your questions.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Haley and Mr. Foreman. All right. Any discussion, I think it's pretty well self-explanatory, so we'll call.
Mr. Abolito?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries, opposing members voting aye.
Next is a proclamation for Stroke Smart. I will stop, I will do my best to get through this, but this is a proclamation for Stroke Smart, and I will read it from up here, then come down there and make the presentation. Whereas in 2022, stroke accounted for approximately one of every twenty deaths in the United States, and whereas on an average in 2022, someone died from a stroke every three minutes, eleven seconds in the United States. Stroke caused one hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-three deaths in the United States in 2022, and the actual number of stroke deaths increased twenty-eight point seven percent during the same time period. And whereas stroke is the leading cause of long-term disability, putting a tremendous financial burden on society, individuals, and families. And whereas there are life-saving treatments that must be administered within three to four hours once the symptoms of a stroke begin. And whereas stroke onset to 911 has not significantly changed for the last twenty-five years, the majority of people not knowing how to spot a stroke or the importance of calling 911 immediately. And whereas businesses, civic organizations, senior communities, faith-based organizations, and residents are encouraged to participate and contribute to the Stroke Smart Spot a Stroke, Stop a Stroke, Save a Life campaign through active citizenship efforts. And whereas Bedford hopes to serve as a model for other communities, cities, and counties thereby advancing the vision of a Stroke Smart America. Now therefore, I, C.G. Stanley, Mayor of Bedford, Virginia, do proclaim Bedford a Stroke Smart Town and call this observance, observance to the attention of all of our citizens. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Bedford to be fixed this 22nd of April, 2025. C.G. Stanley, Mayor. And I might add, this has special meaning to me. My dad actually had a stroke in September of 2001, about a week before 9/11. And every part of this applies. At that time, we did not know the symptoms. Even though we got him to the hospital within the three or four hours, he lost his short-term memory. So, but he was fine otherwise, but it's critical, as this says right here, recognize the symptoms, know the symptoms, and time is valuable in, in anything like this. Get him to the hospital ASAP. Do not hesitate. If you even think that, get him to the hospital. I'll come down now and make the presentation.
And as you come down, we have President Stacy Vaught and Chief Nursing Officer Carrie White with us to receive the proclamation.
All right. Budget presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. And very happy we've made it to this point in fiscal year. We're going to present our fiscal year '26 proposed budget. So, kind of a timeline for you all. This has become almost a year-round process. We open the budget for our departments and start getting everything in around the end of September, and then we adopt the budget typically in May, sometimes it's in June, and then we finish up the adopted budget document and then submit it to GFOI for approval no later than August. So, at that point, we're almost starting again in September. And so, tonight, you'll see that we have a high-level presentation on the budget, and then on May 13th, we do have a public hearing for public comment. And then the adoption of the budget is scheduled for May 27th. There is three main, sorry, excuse me, there's three main strategic goals that actually led this budget development, and it's the same as the ones from last year when we had a strategic planning retreat. There was number one, we summed up as economic development. So, the goal was to promote new businesses and retain our existing businesses and focus on revitalizing downtown. The second was fiscal responsibility. This is going to ensure that we remain with a fiscally responsible budget through balanced budget planning, and we promote employee retention and capital investment. And then number three is citizen involvement. So, we're looking for more opportunities for our citizens to get involved and be engaged. A couple of demographics for you all on the town of Bedford. We are actually fifty-five percent. We are actually 55% owner-occupied. That does also mean that the other half of that is rented. Our median household unit is 192,600, so that's how much the home is valued at for real estate. The curious one for me, the main travel time to work is 20.4 minutes. That actually went down slightly from the last census. And then our persons in poverty is still at 20%. So just a couple of high-level things to note. Real estate in the town of Bedford is actually growing in recent years. This is primarily from the boundary adjustment, but our 2025 land book is up to 836,809,300 for the taxable assessment. That means that the value of one penny is approximately 83,000. And I believe from what Bart has said in prior years, that's a big increase for the town of Bedford. One thing that's always important to note is how does our tax structure compare to other towns that neighbor us and surround us? So we have consolidated that for you. Each town is a little bit different. You can see that most of our taxes are coming from real estate, whereas other neighboring localities such as like the town of Benton and Rocky Mountain are charging things like a machinery tools tax that we are not charging. There's also something called a consumer's utility tax that we are not charging, that our neighbors are charging. We have one of the lower meals tax compared to the towns surrounding us. Ours is at 5.5%, and the other towns are all at 6%. We're one of the only ones that are not charging a vehicle license fee at the moment. You can see that Benton, Rocky Mountain, Amherst all do. And then we have some of the lowest B-Pole, that's the business license rates in comparison with the other towns around us. And this is just kind of for clarity between budgeting and auditing. So we have three types of main funds in the town of Bedford. We have governmental funds. These are what we would consider cash accounting. It's modified slightly, but it does fund things for taxes and fees, and it's designed to recover the cost for those services. It does not operate like a business. A business is going to be the enterprise funds. So these funds, they are full accrual accounting. That means that we report things such as depreciation. We do debt payments as a liability reduction. We report compensated absences, things like that, that we're not reporting with the general fund. When I say operates like a business, this means that the fees are supposed to cover the cost of operating, so it shouldn't have a subsidy from the general fund operating. And then we do have two component units that the town is the fiscal agent for, and that's Economic Development Authority and the Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Okay, so we do have a high level here of all the funds in comparison with the adopted budget from fiscal year '25. So you can see the general fund was at 11.1 million, and the proposed budget is at 11.7 million. That's an increase of 640,000 or 5.7%. The solid waste fund went from 966,000 to 941,000. That's a decrease of 24,000 or 2.51%. The electric fund went from 24 million to 26.7 million. That's an increase of 3.7 million or 11.22%. The public fund, the, excuse me, Public Safety Training Center, this is the second year that we have had that, and that is at 24,000. The restricted fund is at 12,000. The general capital fund is at 205,000 last year, 85,000 this year, so a decrease of 120,000 or 58.7%. The electric fund, the electric capital fund was at a little over 1 million, and this year is proposed to be 751,000, that's a decrease of 28%. And then the revolving loan program was at $2,314. This is money that we're receiving for a revolving loan. And we have only one payment left, so the proposed budget next year is $193. The less inter-fund transfers there, this is transfers between the same consolidated fund. An example of that is if we transfer to the general capital fund from the general fund. We don't want to include that as net activity. That's something to keep our accounting funds in balance, but it doesn't increase the net expenses or revenue for the total fund. So if you decrease out those transfers between the funds, it's actually $36.1 million budget last year to a $39.4 million budget this year. So the total increase is 3.3 million or 9.15%. The next slide that we have for you is the proposed budget position counts across the different fiscal years. So you can see 21 all the way to the proposed budget of fiscal year '26. There's not many changes this year, except the Public Works Department. They do have three frozen positions this year, so they went from a position count of 29 to 26. Some highlights on the general fund. We do have the same real estate and personal property tax rates as the prior year. We still maintain 100% relief on the first 20,000 of vehicle value. We have the same meals tax and lodging tax rates. We do have increased VDOT funding from the state. We did not use prior year reserves or fund balance to balance the budget. And then we adjusted our business license tax from 1 million to 250,000, and from 10 million to 2 million. One other thing here is, it's not a large dollar value, but we do want to draw it to your attention. We have been receiving requests from planning to increase the permit application from $20 to $50. This is for zoning use permit for residential and non-residential, and that brings us to the same rate as our neighbor next door. A couple of other highlights on the expenditure side. We do have a 2% cost of living adjustment included in this budget. It's not quite what we had hoped. The CPI for last year was 2.4%. That's the inflation rate for the economy. The social security went up 2.5%. So we are still under where we had hoped that we would be. There are three vacant positions in Public Works. We had no change to our VRS rate this year. We'll see one next year. Then we did have a 7% increase in our health insurance plan. We did keep all of our current services. And then we also had an increase in VDOT, which was primarily attributed to paving. And then we have very minimal CIP in this budget, which is essentially the roof replacement of this building, and then the mowers for the right-of-way. And looking at some of the trends, we have our top three revenue sources from the town, our real estate, meals tax, and VDOT funding. Actually, interestingly enough, VDOT funding as of this budget has taken the spot of our top single revenue fund. So quite the change over recent years. And you can see here, real estate tax over fiscal year '23 to '26 has grown 25.2%. Highway maintenance funding, which is the VDOT funding, has grown 32.48% over that same time period. And then meals tax has grown 9.78%. And then looking at our expenditure, which is the other side, you can see that the police department is our largest single department expenditure for the town. Public Works and Consolidated Accounts is the largest. But if you also look at the other single organization codes, VDOT is the second largest, and General Properties is the third largest. So the police department has grown in their budget 35.22% over the same period. Then the VDOT funding has grown 118.48%. However, that is attributable also to the money that we've gotten in that grew to the top revenue source of the town. And then we can see the General Properties has grown 9.78% over the same period. So I know one thing that's very important to us is what is our unassigned fund balance or our rainy day funds? And how does that compare to what our minimum policy says that we should keep? So what we are forecasting right now is after moving allocated funds to the fire department for apparatus purchase, we're estimating we will end the year at 3.3 million. And our policy says that we have to have 2.9 million, so we do have around a $400,000 gap there, but not over our policy limit. That is in the right direction. We would like it to be higher rather than lower. Moving to the solid waste fund, there are no changes to the rates presented. Residential is still presented at $25 per month, and the additional part fee is still $3 per month. Just a slight note here, we do currently have 150-plus additional cans or second cans in service. I thought that was a good metric to know. And we are reviewing other service options for commercial customers as we've been identifying the costs associated with it. We have moved most of the administration salary allocations back to the general fund. And this fund also has the same 2% cost of living adjustment and the 7% health insurance increase. And then there's no capital improvement that's funded in the solid waste fund. And I think you'll see a little bit more in the second page here. One accounting measure that we like to keep track of for the accrual funds is something called working capital. What that means is what are your current assets minus your current liabilities? How liquid are you? And if you look at the liquidity of the solid waste fund, you can see here that we're in a negative position. This really started around 2021, and then it's continued today. We're in a negative position of 138,000. So the fund is not currently sustaining the liabilities. It's onboarding. It would almost be like you're having more credit for debt than what you can pay in cash. But as a side note, we have been transferring cash from the general fund to make that deficit up throughout the last several years. The electric fund, it has an increased revenue anticipated from the purchased power costs. The use of prior year reserves is to cover the remaining purchase power costs that's over what we anticipate. This is not a typo. I wish it was. There's a 1,000% increase in capacity costs from PJM. It actually has increased our line item budget by $5 million year over year. So that's the single largest increase in the entire fund. It has the same 2% cost of living adjustment and a 7% health insurance increase, just like the general fund. Some things to note, because of the purchased power increase, we have put the CIP in this fund in half to help address some of those concerns. So the items funded are 751,000. It includes replacing a truck that's been on the list for several years and has been delayed, radios for the utility, training room furnishings, which is a very small purchase, and then small infrastructure improvements and small hydro infrastructure improvements. This is a much prettier picture than the solid waste fund prior. So same metric here, working capital. This is current assets minus current liabilities. And I've also contrasted it here with our cash reserve policy limits. So the red line, if you can see that, is the policy limit of cash we have to maintain and reserve. The blue is the difference between our assets and our liabilities that we have. And you can see that we have 10 million forecasted, or that was actual for 2024. And the concern here, what we have been watching, is that since 2021, we have been seeing a steady decrease the last four years in this metric. So that's something to keep track of, that cash is slowly going out the door. And this is the end of the high-level presentation. I do want to note, we do have a proposed document that is going to be, there's a lot more information in here. I hope it will be very helpful for you. There's things such as goals and objectives for each department and what we hope to accomplish over the next year. There's budget allocations by department and function, capital and debt, the financial policies in the town, line and budgets. And you can see this here, we did move line and budgets to the appendix for easier reading, because it was kind of hard to get a full picture of it when we were flipping between departments. So now it's continuous each page to the next one. The forecast, which is a three-year forecast for the general fund, starts on page 75, it goes up to fiscal year '29. And then the Town Manager's Transmittal Letter is located on page 14, and that's a very high-level review of the town, including different grants that we're working on and some highlights.
I'm sure there'll be more questions once we get into this. And I'm curious, a 10% health insurance increase, is that higher or lower, or about the same as years past?
It's better than I was hoping it would be. What we had been seeing with local choice was it was going up 10% and then 0%, then 10%, and then 0%. So I was planning on a 10%, and I was actually surprised it was only 7. That's still not what we wanted to see, but it could have been worse.
That's right, it could have been a lot worse.
So are we looking to see 13% at some point then?
I hope not.
Okay.
I hope next year's zero again.
Okay, all right.
Continuing on trend.
Any more questions? Thank you. All right, power cost adjustment. Mr. Warner?
The power cost adjustment, or PCA, is adjusted twice a year on November 1st and May 1st. This factor covers power costs which exceed those costs included in base rates. Calculations based on six months of historical cost data. calculation includes prior period power costs that were under or over-recovered based on actual rate revenues. In the past six months, there was a significant under-recovery of power costs due primarily to increasing transmission costs paid to Appalachian Power Company, or APCO. These costs are beyond Bedford's control, as they are approved by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and passed on directly to transmission customers like Bedford. In this case, Bedford is requesting 50% of the under-recovery be passed on through the PCA. The remainder is to be held for potential future recovery. Recall, the council approved 50% of the under-recovered cost to be passed along to customers in the previous PCA, which went into effect November 1st, 2024. The proposed PCA includes these adjustments. The impact on the typical residential user of 1,000 kilowatt-hours will result in a bill increase of $4.98 per month, which represents 3.34%. There are other options available, which include recovering 100% to 0% of the power cost under-recovery. Those options will be made available upon request. The ordinance provides for the PCA to automatically go into effect barring any action by council to modify it. Tonight, Town Council has requested to allow the proposed PCA to go into effect as calculated with 50% of the under-cost recovered and the remaining under-recovered costs to be held for potential future recovery.
All right. Do I hear a motion?
Submove.
Councilman Updike or Vice Mayor Updike made the motion, second? Do you hear a second? Councilman Foster made the second. Now, discussion. Let's talk about it. I know we had this discussion earlier, so make sure it's around where we want to go.
So the question I have is, one, this 50% increase, the $3.34, the other half of it will come out of what we have in the fund we just talked about that was $10 million. Is that where it would come from?
Just to calculate, sorry, someone will let him speak to that.
Yes, so the question is, where does the other money come from?
Yes, where are we taking the other, where are we providing that?
We come out of cash reserves.
Cash, okay, the cash reserves, that's. And what do you, in six months, what are we going to be taking out of our cash reserves in six months? Do you know about approximately?
It's about $230,000. Recall, the amount of under-recovery in this last six months was just about equal to the half that we did not pass along last time. So we're working it down, but that's about the amount of under-recovery we have now.
My question is, what other options are available?
Well, as Bart mentioned, we could not recover any of that under-recovery amount. In that case, we would be drawing about $460,000 out of cash reserves. And that would result in a bill increase of about $2.53. We could recover 100% of the under-recovery, and we would not draw anything out of cash reserves. And that would result in a bill increase of about $7.43 per month for the average residential customer. So I guess the decision is, we're kind of kicking the can down the road a little bit. And I'm perfectly willing to do any of those three options. You all are the decision-makers on where we go from here. You all are the decision makers on where we go from here.
Either way, it's not a good picture. I mean, it's, the way the rates have been going up the past few years, it's just inevitable that this has come on. I mean, it's just, everything's been going on. It's just inevitable.
Well, recall that we're anticipating, and we know for sure, that our capacity costs, our PJM capacity costs, are going from forty thousand dollars a month to four hundred thousand dollars a month. We're already paying over four hundred thousand dollars a month for transmission costs. And that is going up every year in January. That rate goes up as well.
And that, that's per month?
Per month, correct.
So, yeah, this power cost adjustment doesn't include that PJM capacity?
Because we won't see that in our bills until July.
So historically, have we just under-recovered? I mean, I know last year we under-recovered in November.
It really depends on all these moving factors, you know, transmission costs, energy costs. You know, there's a real disconnect, if you ask me, on what the decision makers in Washington and Richmond do. They don't seem to connect, in fact, when they make certain regulations that it filters down to people, to organizations like us. And what's happening in PJM, why the prices are going up, is because so much of the coal-fired generation is being forcibly retired, and there's nothing to take its place. So that, PJM is actually, they're on a watch now that their capacity situation is in jeopardy, and we may be looking at things like droughtouts and blackouts because nobody is building new generator plants. So this idea for them was to increase the amount of money a generator can earn and entice people to build new plants, but it's not happening.
And it takes time. I mean, when coal-fired plants have been mowed, balled, or shut down, it takes years to get them back up, and some are just too far gone.
That's true.
So, I mean, it's, and I told this short story. I spent thirty-four years without Planchon Power in '08, when they started shutting those coal-fired plants down. The writing was on the wall. I remember hearing people say at that time, this is going to come back to hurt us at some point because the demand is going to outpace the supply. And here we are, and that's what you're seeing. I mean, it's, I'm not, as John said, I'm not kicking the can down the road, but we're between a rock and a hard place. We really have no options. It's all across the country, so, and it's not John's fault. I mean, we're all doing everything we can to keep the rates down and keep it as much off the customers as we can, but it's only so much you can do.
Now, one thing that our rate consultants told us, that we should be spending in terms of capital spend, about the amount of our depreciation expense, so we're about maybe half of that. So we're kind, if you really look at it, we're kind of falling behind in our capital spend. But, you know, we were trying to do everything we possibly can to limit the impact on customers, and not, and residential customers, obviously, but also our industrial customers.
So how does our rate compare to our neighboring companies that are beside us? Would this change?
Yeah, we'll still be lower, but APCO had a rate increase January first, I believe it was, so they're also going up. We're going to be, take a big jump, I think, another six months or so, unfortunately.
So you based on that, we hadn't even got our rate study back yet, have we?
No, but we know exactly what our capacity costs are going to be. That's been established last fall when they had the capacity auction, which they used to do three years in advance. Now they're down to a few months in advance because there's so many people that intervene in these cases, then it drags on and on and on. So the idea of having it three years in advance is it gives you time to react. But now that they're behind so far, they don't give you any time to react, so. But we know what it's going to be. We know it's going to go up to four hundred thousand dollars a month. We're doing everything we can to try and deal with that. We had the people from AMP here two weeks ago to look at putting more generation capacity here in town. We're also doing a feasibility study up at the hydro plant to expand the capacity there. And of course, you all know that we've been looking for more solar capacity, and we really need to address those issues. We need to address the solar issue. We can't keep kicking that can down the road. And that's, those are the tools we have to deal with these increases, Carl. We've got to take advantage of them.
Only other question I have, you were talking about options, and we said we'd do fifty or whatever. Any possible, like twenty-five? What would that come up to?
Whatever, I don't know. Those are the three options that I calculated, zero, fifty, and a hundred. If you want to do twenty-five, I'd have to, you know, calculate and get back to you tomorrow. So it's up to you, fight folks, and you're welcome to have a discussion or an argument.
So just for clarity, you said at fifty, it was four dollars and ninety-eight cents, and then for a hundred, you said seven, forty-five, seven dollars and forty-three?
Seven dollars and forty-three cents.
Forty-three.
And for clarification purposes, when we say fifty-fifty, it's a wash, but if we say like seventy-five, twenty-five, it's seventy-five to, the first number's the customer, second is Bedford Power, Bedford Electric. Am I right?
Every one of them.
Yeah.
Just be clear if you make that statement.
Yeah, I know. That's what I'm making sure I, yeah.
I mean, Ann made a good point. Our cash reserves have been slowly dwindling, and we're still in a good position, you know? We're well above our target, but we do notice that we're, you know, dwindling over time. And that's primarily because we've had an increase in cost environment for power. And I don't see that changing anytime soon, you know? It's just not going to happen overnight.
It's just not sustainable.
And some of those decreases in cash position represent prior instances in which the town took a percentage of the hit rather than passing it along.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's very true, and of course, we're working with economic development to keep our industrial customer here and attract new customers. So we've been buying things like transformers for customers. You know, one of the bright spots on the horizon is we do see growth coming, you know? We expect, I don't know, maybe three hundred or more residential new homes. And as Bart reported, just about every vacant lot in town is being developed or planned to be developed, so, you know, that's a positive. In the ten years I've been here, this is the first time we're really looking at potential for growth.
It's definitely, growth is coming, and we're growing and increasing, and the amount of power is going to increase also, so, again, we've got to get ready for it, be prepared for it, but. So what do you all think? Fifty-fifty, or you want to change it, or?
Well, what's your angle, Updike?
Well, you know, me having to pay a light bill too, I mean, I want to minimize that as much as we can, but that deals with today. If we want to take care of power costs tomorrow, which is going to be more than it is today, we need to make sure that we position ourselves so that we can address those concerns. And like Ann said, you know, this number is going down as we move forward for various reasons. And as John has said, you know, we need to put ourselves in a position to where we can offset those costs, whether it is solar, whether it is natural gas, whatever the case is, we need to make sure that we have the funds on hand so that we can better meet those challenges. You know, so whatever we do, just, we need to make sure that we're cautious in that and that we have the resources to attack what's coming tomorrow. Today is going to take care of itself, but we need to also address what's coming tomorrow.
And let me just remind everybody that we're three, have three vacant positions right now for A-line. We're coming to the conclusion that we're going to bring some more apprentices online. We've got some good applications, but we're short of A-line, and that's getting to be a little bit a desperate situation. So, you know, you look at the big picture, and we just have to have competitive wages in order to attract these people and keep them. And, you know, that's another thing that's kind of on our radar, too.
I think also, you know, like Ann had in the strategic goal, one of them was ensure fiscal responsibility while promoting capital investment, and we're not, we're not promoting capital investment where we're at right now. I know you have more needs that we can fill, and I know so does Public Works and everything, so, you know, that's just another thing that we've got to start.
Yeah, and, you know, let's face it, our system is, was, it's over a hundred years old, you know? It takes a lot of maintenance to keep the system going. And so we have all the types of capital needs, and this is a very, very tight budget for us, very tight.
The utility grid is very hard to maintain, as we all know, in that once you go through it, it's time to start back and go through it again. I mean, it's always something to replace, the tree trimming, the poles, the lines, transformers, it's always something that is going to go bad. And I will give Bedford Electric credit. I mean, the power generally is not off long at all. I mean, y'all do a great job, and that's why it's important for me to give them the tools and equipment they need to do the great job they're always doing. But again, it's not easy, and as we now see with, it used to be applicants galore out there, but it's not like that anymore. I've heard other utilities have the same problem. Our Planchon doesn't give them like they once did, so I don't know, I don't know what's going on out there. I could guess, but nonetheless, but, again, we're talking about, we've got to get it where it's sustainable, and at some point, get to where we're okay with it. So, and that's, we're asking to vote on tonight, the fifty-fifty, or whatever other ideas you have.
What's the current PCA at the moment? I don't have the number with me.
The current PCA is, let's see, I think it's, I know it's three cents, I know three, let me see. You know, I don't think I brought that with me, unfortunately. I could calculate it, but, yeah. I can't give it to you off the top of my head. The amount of the PCA isn't really critical. I mean, the number itself, what is critical is what's the impact on customers.
That's normally what the customer wants to see. How much increase am I going to incur?
This increase, when is the next time it's evaluated again, John?
November first would be the next one.
So we'll be at this rate until November first, then?
Correct. Okay, the three, the current PCA is now three point one oh eight cents per kilowatt-hour.
So really, we're at six months, so would that be the still the two hundred thousand dollars that you were talking about that we would be removing from the fund, or was that a year's worth?
That's six months.
That's six months, okay, that's what we'll verify.
The under and over recovery is recalculated every six months.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah.
Yeah, I want to verify.
Instead of six months, yes. We talked about so many things, we.
Yeah, so we'll verify it so it's pretty.
Correct, every six months, that's.
So that'd be four hundred, over four hundred thousand dollars for the year.
You know, the reason why we do it twice a year, well, first of all, our customers, especially our large customers, want stability. They don't want to see this and change everything. Number two is, we do have seasonal costs that are different. For us, the winter is more expensive than the summer, so we try and capture those costs in each season.
All right, everybody clear?
Right now, the motion is for fifty-six.
And then in six months?
And we can reevaluate.
Yes, reevaluate.
Well, we'll be reevaluated by November.
Correct, yes, yes. John can give us a.
Oh, you know, of course, we're waiting on the.
And we got the rate study. And then we'll have the rate study, potentially have the rate study.
We probably have something to talk about before that six-month period. If we don't do anything, all of that cost will come through the PCA.
Yeah.
So that's something I hope we can address before.
So just one last, I just want to make sure, so our under-recovery back to November, we'd equate it to about a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar under-recovery as well?
No, it's four hundred, it's, that's only half of it. The two-thirty is half.
Right, well, I mean, when we, when we under-recovered in November, we have over fifty percent.
Right, that was four hundred thousand dollars in that range, was what we did not recover last time around.
Oh, so it's four hundred thousand, then two-thirty this time?
Four hundred thousand this time around. We're asking to collect half of that.
And then we'll look again in November.
Right, I understand that, but we're, payment is what we're doing.
Correct.
And the thing about growth, yeah, it's going to help, but it's not going to be here tomorrow. It's going to be over the next year or two, a few years.
How many years, never know.
But, you know, it's something on the horizon. It's a positive.
We ready for a vote?
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
No.
Mr. Apolito?
No.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries with five members voting aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. All right, there is no other business, and I, anything else to discuss? I adjourn this meeting until five thirty PM on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, for a work session.